Can you hear me? Yes, okay. Calling this meeting into order, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, so in terms of public notice, this meeting was a notice pursuant to Sunshine Law. It's available on the NCO's website and we will be following tonight's meeting agenda. I would like to remind members of Neighborhood Plan Decorum or, excuse me, Decorum requirements as well as just general pleasantries as we continue on with this meeting. Let's, I'd like to turn and introduce Spencer, our temporary neighborhood assistant for today. And Spencer, could you please take roll call and establish an inform us of our quorum? Thank you.
Sure. Hello, everybody. Spencer. Chair Daniel Bass. Ed Flores. Josie Ka'ah Nehe.
Present.
Rumi Ka'ah Ana Ikaki.
Present.
Dennis Kim. Mary Lynn Lee. Ryan Ozawa.
Present.
Mary Smart. Sorry, Ryan, are you online?
Yes, I'm here. I'm on my way.
Mary Smart. Leslie Among.
Here.
Anne Freed.
Here.
Ashley Trotter. Sharon Williams.
Here.
Elise Carmody. Rodney Park. Darsha Lee.
Present.
Present online. Sabrina Gustafson. Skylar Ross. Tanya Ahina. Michael Dow. Trevor Nagamine. Emil Spri, I'm sorry, Sprenchina. Martina Segura. And Catherine Kupuka'ah. Okay, so we have quorum. Four, five, six. With sixteen members present. Thank you, Chair.
You needed it.
I needed it. All right, thank you, Spencer. Uh, I was notified that Vice Chair Nagamine will be absent tonight and member Smart will be attending virtually if she's not online right now. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to monthly reports on Honolulu Fire Department. Seeing none, is HFD online?
Yep.
Hi, welcome, please proceed.
Can you guys hear me?
No, could you please speak up?
Yeah. How's that? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. My name is firefighter Tyler Perkins from the Mililani YPO Fire Station. So our incident statistics for August, we had, excuse me, one structured fire, five wildland or brush fires, four activated alarms, seventy-seven total medical emergencies, two motor vehicle collisions, and one hazardous material incident. Our safety tip for this month is gonna be evacuation planning. So in the event of an emergency, be prepared with an evacuation plan. Create your plan with all members of your family, household, and keep in mind those with limited abilities, children, elderly, and your pets. Identify possible exits and escape routes, predetermine a safe meeting place, and always choose the escape route that is the safest. Think about various scenarios and strategize how to use them, and review and practice the plan often. Assemble an emergency supply kit. Remember to pack important documents, medicines, and necessary pet items. Remember to stay calm, stay informed, and stay alert. And for more information, you can visit fire.honolulu.gov.
Members, are there any questions for HPD? Please raise your hand so we can recognize people in person as well as online. Anne, do you have a question for HFD? Would you please leave your screen? Okay, seeing none, no questions. Abhor, are there any question members of the audience? Seeing none, we're gonna proceed with HPD. Thank you so much for your report.
All right. Aloha, good evening, everyone. Corporal Muna, District Two Community Policing Team. For statistics for the month of September two thousand twenty-three for Mililani area, six hundred and seventy-five calls for service so far, seven burglaries, zero robberies, three assaults, two auto thefts, two UEMVs, which are unauthorized entry into motor vehicle, basically car break-ins, two terroristic threatening cases, and zero murder or attempted murder cases. Also, I wanted to send the report to you, but I wasn't too sure what to email. Is it, do I just use that NCO email or is that okay?
Absolutely, you can send it to myself or the NCO, whichever one or both.
Perfect, okay, I'll do that from now on as well.
Thank you.
For arrest stats, you know, at my level, I can't get a total amount. If it's one of those situations where you have the victim, you have the suspect, it's one complete package right there, they're able to arrest on the spot, those numbers I can get. What happens more often than not, though, if there's a misdemeanor and there's a lead, they get sent to the misdemeanor follow-up detail, those officers will investigate the case, they'll find the lead, they'll go out and make the arrest at a later date in time. If it's a felony, that case will get sent to CID, which is the Criminal Investigations Division. Those detectives will get the case, they'll find the lead, they'll go out and make the arrest at a later date in time. Those arrests, I actually don't have access to, so I'm not able to give you an accurate arrest per crime rate ratio, if that makes sense, but what actually that does lead me to, which is some good news, is I'm not too sure if anybody saw the latest honolulupd.org. I always used to say, refer to crime mapping for further stats, but they actually revamped it, and now there's a new page where they added a data dashboard, HPD data dashboard, and you can see violent crimes, property crimes, crimes by district, which is over here. But the thing I'm getting to, which is awesome, is there's a tab called Cases Cleared, and that actually gives a really good depiction of how many cases were generated, the classification of it, and how many of those cases actually got cleared by the detectives or by MFUD, whether it was arrested and charged, or maybe the complainant decided to withdraw prosecution, or even unfounded, sometimes the information by the victim isn't always accurate or might be a false report as well. So you can really see the percentage of cases cleared compared to the past, so check that out if you're curious about arrest, arrest ratio as well. For safety tips, the highest crime rate as far as classification right now in a district, luckily it doesn't seem to hear too much, but UEMVs are high. Our district also covers North Shore, probably a lot of cases are mostly out there, but I think they're about twenty right now, and they're still going up. So a few of them over here, but it's never a bad idea to get some safety tips for how to prevent vehicle theft and UEMV. So first and foremost, keep your vehicle locked at all times when you're driving, even when you're driving. It doesn't happen a lot, but you might get that occasional situation where you're at a red light, and some suspects do actually try and approach vehicles at a red light to try and steal their car if they see an easy victim, unfortunately. So keep your vehicle locked at all times, even when you're driving. Never leave your vehicle running if unattended, even if it's for a few short minutes, even if it's in your own driveway. Unfortunately, we just, you know, we live in a world where if someone hears an engine and there's a crime of opportunity, they're gonna take it. So just lock your vehicle, don't leave it unattended while it's running. Don't keep your keys or your spare keys by the front door or back door at night. Take them to the bedroom with you. You don't want to think of the idea of someone breaking into your home, but sometimes when they do, they also actually go for your car keys, and then not only did you have a home invasion, but your car is missing as well. I'm not too sure if Android has a version of it, but Apple has those air tags, those GPS air tags. If you have one of those, throw it in your car. Hopefully, your car never gets stolen, but if it does, it's an easy, immediate way to track your vehicle. Park in a well-aided area if you don't have a garage. And finally, I don't think it really happens too much out here, more so North Shore, but those, those lock boxes that you see people hang from their back bumper with a spare key in it, it's getting to a point now where the suspects, they get kind of brazen, and they know for sure there's a key in there. So if they're able to bolt cut that thing and take it into the bushes and smash it open, unfortunately, now they have access to your car. So if there's an alternate means to carry your spare key around, I would recommend doing that. But that's all I have for safety tips. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Corporal Muna. Members, are there any questions for HPD? Yes, Elise.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi. If you're in a car accident, the car is damaged, it needs to be towed. A friend of mine was in this situation, and the attending officer was telling her that she had to use the towing company that the police were contacting. And she wanted to use another towing company. And it came down to whichever company got there first, you know, she was gonna have to use. Now, what is, what's the deal with that? Why can't people just get their own towing company?
For, if it's a, if it's a situation where the vehicle's not a traffic hazard, if it's off to the side, they completely have their own discretion. As long as it's not gonna be hindering any kind of traffic or create a hazard or anything like that, they have full right to use whoever they want. But if it is a hazard, if it's still on the road, or it's something that like somebody else might hit, HPD is contracted, I think right now it's all island. So we do that so that we can get a tow out there immediately and reliably, so that we can get that car out of the way. They still have discretion, I should say, to where they want it towed, but in order to get it out of the hazardous area, we do have to call our tow company, the one they were contracted with. But again, if it's not a hazard, then just-
I believe this car was at, on the side of the road, so that would have been okay, right?
Yeah, again, I wasn't there, so I'm not too sure. But from what I, I can tell you for what, how we operate, if the vehicle's off to the side, it's not creating a hazard at all, they can, they have the time, the luxury of time to call whoever they want for it, even if it's, yeah, even if it's someone they know has a tow company.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anne, I see that your hand is raised. Anne, you're on mute.
Hi, everybody, Anne Freed here. Officer, I, sorry, I forgot your name, Johnson, because I can't see you on the screen right now. So I don't know about you folks, but I have not forgotten Maui. And, you know, I said, brought this up last week, I'm gonna bring it up again. And I think we, you know, we as a board and the council members in particular need to take some action on that. Every night, so I'm on the app next door, and, you know, that was just great because we find out what's going on. And what's going on in my neighborhood is three o'clock, two o'clock in the morning, there's bombs and aerials going off almost every night. You know, and the last time I got, you know, well, we have to see it, blah, 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 maybe the law needs to be changed. My question is, this is life and limb. This is no longer a quality of life issue. This is life and limb. If, if the situations are right, my whole entire two hundred and eighty-three condo community is gonna go up in flames. You know, it's very personal to me, because my friend Senator Roz Baker, who lived in Mahina, lost everything except her life as a result of that fire in Mahina. Something has to be done. So my question to you, Officer, is maybe you can't answer this, but if you take it back to your supervisor and chief, and the chief, is why isn't there a transport? Why isn't there, if this was, if this was a murder investigation, which this is potentially thousands of lives at stake here, hundreds of lives at stake here. Why isn't there, you know, surveillance? Why doesn't somebody go out and pick a, just pick a place where it's been reported? I can tell you the park right above us, up by the private homes over Waikoloani Woodlands, that's where it's happening, every night, every night. And all it has to happen, because we live in the woodland, where there's lots of wood, all it has to happen is the high winds and the breeze, and we're toast, literally. So, you know, I asked you, what, what is HPD prepared to do? What are you gonna do?
For aerials, fireworks? Sorry, the beginning was breaking up a little bit.
I'm sorry, any illegal fireworks that are fire hazards right now?
Yeah, that's, okay, that's why, yeah, I thought I heard. Yeah, I remember we spoke about this last month, and again, with every time, every issue that comes up, I always generate an after-action memorandum that goes all the way up the chain to this Assistant Chief. So everybody's, everybody's issues are heard, and they all go up. As far as where, where it is now, it's the same as what it was last month, which is, with any crime, not just fireworks, not just aerials, not just assault or thefts, we need somebody to make a statement. Short of an officer seeing it themselves, we still need somebody to make a statement. So if there's somebody in the Waikoloani area, or somebody that does see the fireworks go off, or they see someone setting it off, or they know who it is, meet with the officer, please. Meet with them, point them out, show them video footage, write a statement, because like any other crime, it has to go to court. And nothing can go to court without a complainant. You know, we, we have, if we, if we don't have a complainant, how do we identify a suspect? So we need someone to write a statement, that would be great, or the officer can see it themselves, that would be great as well. But at the end of the day, that's what we would need. So if you'd be willing to meet with an officer. The other good thing with meeting with an officer too, when these things happen, is that I think a big disconnect in a lot of cases that get called for are people, I hear it all the time, you know, oh, the officer showed up, they left, nothing happened, they didn't do anything. But that miscommunication can completely be remedied if they just meet with the officer afterwards and have a one-on-one with them. What did you see? Why didn't you do what I, what I saw looked like nothing? Or what was the disposition of that? That way you can have an easy discussion, very transparent, and get to the bottom of whatever the disposition of the enforcement was. And it really clears up a lot of the air, it really does, but a lot of people, unfortunately, don't want to meet with officers. They want to report something, but that's, they want to stop it right there, and then it ends there. So there's not a lot for police to go off of.
I see.
You can hear it, but you can't see it.
Okay, no, I saw Josie's hand was up, but it's now down, so I'm gonna recognize Leslie, then Catherine, and if she wants to raise her hand back, she can't.
I've been reporting these illegal fireworks for two years here on the board. I even, as much as said, maybe we should have a reward to get people involved to, that who witnessed this. Otherwise, we're just running around a circle, doing the same thing over and over, and nothing's getting done. Talk to a police officer, make a report that isn't, no witnesses are there, and we get, it's either we put a reward to get incentive in the private sectors of our district, so somebody sees it, and then anonymous, you know, nobody has to mention who it was, and then, and then, you know, until it goes to court, then it'll be a different thing. But other than that, we have to have some kind of incentive to get people to come out of their house and say, I seen this guy popping fireworks for years, it's that guy right there, you know, and then have a reward. It's, it's that bad, really, man. It's like an old cowboy town, there's illegal things going on already. It's either we do something like that, or I'm afraid we're just gonna be running around in one big circle over and over, talking to the police officer, nothing gets done, and then the guy explodes bombs the next week again, they call the police officer over and over. It's, it's useless at this point. We have to do something now to really do something, get something done, really.
Any response?
Yeah, no, I mean, again, with people who do remain anonymous, again, it really doesn't have, unless the officer does see it themselves. We actually used to do that in my, a couple details ago that I was in, we'd try to go out a few years before, a few days before New Year's Eve, and see if we could, in progress, see people lighting the fireworks and try and, if we do, then we cite them or arrest them, recover the fireworks. And even then, does that really stop them at the end? I'm not too sure, but it does help, right? At least you're out there, you're trying to do something. But it was, it was a cat and mouse game a lot. You'd see the aerials go off over here, and we'd rush over there. And then we'd get there, and there's nothing, and there's aerials over here, and we'd rush over there. So that's where working with people who are willing to make a statement and show us the observations and testify in court that this was the person that set off the fireworks, that's where it really helps. But again, a lot of people want to remain anonymous, and that's fine, they have every right to, but that's how usually a lot of cases work, is that we need the complainant, the suspect, the witness, so on and so forth.
Thank you. Catherine. Leslie, could you share the? Thank you.
I encounter, it seems like it's a common occurrence that vehicles run the red light. I have the green, but I can see on the side that a car is making a left-hand turn. And what if I should, I could have clipped that car. Am I at fault?
No, if you had the right, if you had the right of way, you should not be at fault. Is this by Ruby Tuesdays by any chance? No? Kind of over there? Yeah. Yeah, because I've heard reports in other places too, where, you know, they have the left turn green, and then it goes red, and the cars are still trying to rush through and rush through. And then the people who have the right of way with the green going straight, you know, if they went straight, they'd end up hitting them, so. I'll put this in the after, and I'll send it up, yes, you're welcome.
Thank you. Any final questions? Oh, yes, member Kim.
Can you hear me? Okay. I think the problem is you can't get people to be a witness, so you need to go up the chain. You need to look for the source of these fireworks. And so it's not your area, you know, it's someplace up higher, but I think that's the only way you're gonna stop it, or slow down the amount of fireworks that you see. And just for information, my brother lives in Utah, they allow aerials, but they ban firecrackers. The smoke is too big for a lot of the people, the older people there. Kind of interesting, but just FYI.
Well, thank you. I actually mentioned the same thing last month too, where enforcement, of course, that helps, that's part of our job, that's, we're never gonna deny that, that we're out there, we're trying to do that. But like anything else, to get to the source of it, as I mentioned last month as well, same thing, is that, that would be great, that would be great. That's well above my pay grade, I don't know, to start from there, but yeah.
All right, I'm gonna open up questions from members of the audience. Is there a question from the members of the audience? Oh, oh, please speak at the microphone for the record. Thank you. And if you're, if you'd like to be recognized for a question, just queue in line. Thank you. Please introduce yourself and your question.
Hi, I'm Debbie Perry. I just have a question regarding the intersection. She brought this up, so I thought about it, one by McDonald's on Cam Highway. There's another street over there that there's cars that are turning, you're either turning this way or this way, and then you have the lane that goes straight. I've encountered people running that red light numerous times to where I'm just wondering when they do that, because I'll stop and blast my horn, and my boyfriend will say, oh, what are you blasting your horn for? I said, maybe they don't know what they're doing, and you, I just want them to wake up. So what is the best thing to do for people like that?
Well, that's a very good question. There are a lot, a lot of things go through a lot of people's heads on how to react. I've, I've been a horn guy myself, you know, so I understand completely sometimes. Either it wakes them up, or maybe you think maybe they'll get a little embarrassed, and it'll stick with them, next time they'll be a little bit more careful. And horn is for emergency use anyway, so if it's one of those things where it might have been a T-bone, it's authorized as far as I am concerned. Just, I think at the end of the day with anything, not just left turn, right turn, people running those red lights in general, defensive driving is huge. I try and live by that every time I hit the road, not to drive in people's blind spots. Check both rearview mirror and over my shoulder if I'm gonna merge, things like that. And defensive driving, same thing, if it looks like, oh, I got the green, but you could still see those cars still trying to push through and make that left, just be ready for it, because even though you're on lookout, not everybody is, unfortunately. So I think at the end of the day, defensive driving is a good key. But yeah, thank you.
Go ahead, sir, please introduce yourself, and go ahead and proceed with your question or concern.
Hi, I'm Walton O'Young. I'm presented myself several times to this board. My question, before I ask my question, I know that the board passed an amendment regarding the police and having a substation as a proposal. I've attended several Neighborhood Security Watchmen and Community Affairs on a number of times. So my question is, since he's here also for the Neighborhood Security Watch to promote that and increase that, isn't that, wouldn't it be interesting to post somewhere the number of Neighborhood Security Watch in the community, like Mililani, to encourage people to be more participatory in that avenue to work with HPD? Instead of just voicing your complaint indiscriminately?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, yeah, no, good question. The substation, sorry, yeah, the substation conversation, again, that's, unfortunately, it's well out of my hands, I'm not too sure where they are with that. But as far as the, how people can access how many Neighborhood Security Watches there are, that's a great idea. I feel like there might be a place where they can. If they can, I'll try and find it, and I'll send it to you to disseminate. If there isn't, that's a great idea, because we always love to promote Neighborhood Security Watches. And to be honest, out of the three sectors in our district, this Waihewa and North Shore, Mililani has the most, both down here, Maoka, everywhere. Mililani is very good with Neighborhood Security Watches, and it's only growing. So like you said, that's a great idea, and maybe people will see that it's growing, get on board, and maybe start some more. We actually just had a, like you mentioned, that large meeting at one of the rec centers from people of different areas, so when we do that, they go back to different areas, and it has a potential to create multiple Neighborhood Security Watches when they go back, not just one. So, yeah, that's a good idea, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Please, if there is a list, submit that.
Yes.
And what we can do is we can provide that to the Google, the Neighborhood Board Google folder for all of our Neighborhood Board members.
That'd be great, yeah, I feel like there should be something public, if there isn't already, because even the meeting that he's referring to that we went to, that was actually on the public website, the honolulupd.org weekly calendar, the public calendar, that event was on there, posted for the public, so, yeah.
And just as a point of clarification, in terms of the substation, the resolution this board passed for recommendations from Honolulu Police Department in terms of a substation or a smaller district, that those recommendations are due within the, at the end of the fiscal year. So HPD has, has a lot of time, and these are just, you know, recommendations from our board to the HPD.
You know, I said it before, and I'll say it again, we're all on the same page. If we can get more officers, and no one's, no one's arguing there.
Yeah.
So with the three thirteens, it does seem to help as well, this new schedule for the roster tonight, it's, they're at ninety-two percent, and we had a hard time seeing that before. So ninety-two percent basically means out of the thirteen beats, only one is missing. So that, that's, that's really good, so. But we're hoping for more, let's see if anybody else, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Corporal Muna. I believe you have one question here. Oh, go ahead.
Officer, I know that the traffic cam has been initiated here on Oahu. Does HPD have any statistics whether or not this has served as a deterrent in any of the neighborhoods or any of the byways on the streets?
Oh, that's a good question, you know, I'm not sure. I can look into that, and in that email, I'll see if I can add that information as well.
Yeah, because it is a dangerous intersection over there, and perhaps, I don't want to get stoned for this, but perhaps a traffic cam might be a deterrent at that intersection or any other intersection.
Yeah, a lot, yeah, exactly, along with maybe some signage too.
Yes.
Just to remind people that they're on camera.
Red light.
Okay, thank you. Good idea, thank you.
Yes, you have a question.
I know this is slightly outside of your district, but the black truck on the right-hand side of Cam Highway going back up towards Ko'uka Boulevard, coming from Mililani, is back. I see him almost every day now, because I work, I work, I've been working a couple late-night shifts. So it's him, and then it has two mopeds that typically park over there as well. And then if you're coming down the road from Mililani side on Cam Highway, right? If you look right over the gorge, now there's a white tarp.
Towards YPO side?
Yeah, when you're looking across the gorge, like where they actually live, you can actually see now the white tarp, it's all back up again, everything else, so that.
Got it.
I know it's right outside your district, and I remember Officer, and I remember-
Probably Officer Tim Inuma was over here.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So last time he said he was gonna follow up with your guys' neighboring district to follow up to see whether or not something can be made, because I know it's, they're on the army land, but the road itself, you guys can still try to cite and see what you guys can do, so.
Yeah, I know he did. Yeah, I know he did. And so the community policing team out there, I think, has been aware of that. And then I can't confirm, I'm sure it's not my place to, military could confirm or not, but I feel like there was some kind of enforcement. That specific area, maybe not if the tarp is still there, but I know they were made aware of it as well. So I'll pass it on though for sure. Thank you.
Yes, just as a friendly reminder, our Neighborhood Board jurisdiction extends all the way into Waipio and Melamalu northbound, as well as down into Ko'uka, or excuse me, not Ko'uka, Ko'ra Ridge. That goes in, that actually divides, that is split between two police districts. Am I clear on that?
Yes, us and District Three.
Yes, okay. So just for friendly reminder, members of the board.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, any final questions? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, everyone. Take care, have a good night.
All right, is a member of the Combat Aviation Brigade, 25th Infantry Division here online tonight?
Yes, ma'am. Hey, this is Major Daniel Ball from the Combat Aviation Brigade. How's everybody doing tonight?
Major Ball, welcome. Please proceed. Thank you.
Yes, I got three comments to bring up and then one follow-up question from last month's community board. So to start with, I would like to remind everyone that the September Job Fair is coming up. It's actually going to be held at Mililani High School on October 10th from 8:30 a.m. to 2 p.m., which is open to the public. Job offers provisional hiring and applicants are welcome to apply online at himwr.com ahead of time. But no need, you can also, anyone that wants to can walk in, walk in with their references and proof of ID to pursue job opportunities with the Morale Welfare Recreation Department on U.S. Army Garrison Hawaii. So looking forward to seeing, see a lot of people out there. Bowling alley, recreation facilities, childcare, various opportunity areas that people can apply for. Moving on to the next comment, want to really remind, remind the public of the upcoming JPMRC, the Joint Pacific Multinational Readiness Center Training Rotation, something we've been doing for the last couple of years in the October, November timeframe every year. Very large, large-scale training event. We have multinational partners coming in from across the Pacific and the rest of the world, but looking at approximately 600 foreign military participants this year from Taiwan, New Zealand, Indonesia, the Philippines. Increase from last year, there's going to be increased traffic and increased foreign military presence here during the October and November months coming up. But the U.S. Army Garrison is going to push out additional details and informations to the community in the near future there. The Garrison did push a training advisory on 31 August for September that talks about the training that's been occurring, has been occurring over the last few weeks and continuing through the end of this week with helicopter training and blank fire training happening this week. Also, for the rest of the week, they are doing both mortar and artillery shoots on Schofield barracks, so there will be an increased noise that's happening. And I'll refer back to the previous brief on JPMRC. We are expecting a very large volume of Air Force large jet traffic coming in and out of Wheeler Airfield this year, which is a slight change from normal operations, but just to make the public aware of that. And then moving on, we had a question last month that referred to how, how the Army intended to manage private properties such as Makua after the expiration of the lease. So just want to follow up from there. But really, the overall point here that I've received is that it's still too early to speculate on that. There is a process that we're going through, very different courses of action that involve parcelling the land out or a record of decision brief that's happening about it, combination of renewing the lease, doing purchase options of the land or doing land exchanges, which where they trade land that the Department of Defense owns in exchange for the previously leased land. But the bottom line is it's still too early in the process for, for me or anyone else to comment on how that's happening. But that concludes the talking points, the brief that I have, so I will stand by for questions from the audience.
Mahalo, Major Ball. Our members, are there any questions for the U.S. Army? Please raise your hand. And I see that your hands raised. Go ahead.
I just want to say the noise has been a lot less. Appreciate, I think the dialogue is really good and I think I appreciate and I'm sure others appreciate the heads up for the incoming exercise. Thanks for the brief, Major.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll make sure I relay that and we'll continue to keep up those efforts.
Are there any final questions for members of the board? Seeing none, I'm going to open it up to members of the audience. I see that Lopaka is online. Lopaka, could you please introduce yourself and state your question or concern to Major Ball?
Yes, hello, Chair. Hello, Major Ball. My name's Lopaka Yokeppa. I'm an heir to native tenants from Ma'Kua. And considering that the lease is about to expire in six years, 2029, I'm wondering if you guys have a response on what you guys are, how are you guys planning on dealing with the heirs of the 18 private properties that were condemned and taken from the native tenants without just compensation?
I do not have a comment at this time, but I will take the note very specifically about those 18 properties. As far as the overall plan for those properties, the first decision being made is in 2025 with regards to how to renew the lease and everything that's going on. But I will, I will bring back the question about those properties you specifically mentioned.
Thank you, Major. I'd just like to reiterate that, yeah, these properties are private properties that were taken by condemnation proceedings without the consent of the native tenants or the actual landowners. And so thank you for taking the question and I hope to get a response from the next representative that shows up next month because I asked the same question of the representative last month and he said he was providing an answer this month and so now here I am again. So please, Major Ball, if you wouldn't mind getting a prompt response on this.
Yes, sir, I understand. I think that it may have been lost in translation when I got these notes, but I'll make sure that we very specifically call out those properties you're asking about.
All right, thank you. Are there any other members of the audience who have any questions to direct to the United States Army? Seeing none, thank you so much, Major Ball, for your time. We look forward to seeing you return possibly next month. Is it going to be you?
It will either be me or my counterpart. It's me and one other guy that bounce back and forth, so 50/50 shot.
All right, cool. Sounds good. We'll see, we'll see you or your counterpart in October with some follow-up. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to move on to the Honolulu Board of Water Supply. I did get, receive a message from the Board of Water Supply stating that their representative, Kathleen Pahinui, is unavailable tonight. With that, is there any other member or representative of the Honolulu Board of Water Supply here tonight, this evening? Seeing and hearing none, we're going to move on and the report will be uploaded to the Google Drive for the Mililani Neighborhood Board. Okay, members, we're going to move on to the approval of meeting minutes. Yes.
I have a comment about the minutes.
May I open up to discussion in a minute?
I want to talk about them first. About what these minutes are?
Yes, in discussion. Let me, let me introduce the minutes one second and then we'll open it up to discussion.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, so members, on the agenda, we have the approval of the meeting minutes for Wednesday, August 23rd, 2023, the initial convening meeting minutes. There has been some discussion. Members, please note that the meeting minutes are quite different from previously provided by our former neighborhood assistant partner, Akiona. He provided some very clear summaries. Dylan, our new temporary neighborhood assistant, did not provide those summaries as shown in the meeting minutes. I would like to recommend that we do not move on these meeting minutes. I would like to table these for further action in a future meeting and I'd like to open that up to discussion, recognizing Secretary Gustafson. I'm sorry? No comments? You had a comment. Okay. I will make note that Secretary Gustafson did have some concerns about the meeting minutes that was exchanged via email. Any other discussion regarding the meeting minutes? Okay, seeing none, the minutes are tabled for future action. We're going to move on to community concerns. Are there any community members at this time who would like to report of any events or concerns within the community? Yes, please introduce yourself again and state your concern or event. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Walton O'Young again on Pioneer Place. I'm just doing a follow-up on previous things I brought up on the trees on Pioneer Place. I want to give hell for the city on action. They took action last week, removed the trees and planted new trees and the neighbors are quite pleased with one concern is that they be given instruction on the care of the trees, which according to the email I got today is that they will be giving a written instruction to the neighbors, homeowners, I should say, on that action. So that's the next action anticipated, but the city is going to be watering the trees for eight months and then the homeowners take over after that. Thank you, city. I appreciate their action.
Thank you. Are there other, any other community members who would like to report of any events and concerns within the community? Uh, yes, Board Member Flores.
Yes, I'd like to just, I reside in an area called the Ridge and there's about 300 homes down there. And I'd just like to give a shout out and kudos to Senator Kedani who will be supporting the, continue supporting the effort to keep the California grass cut because it is, it's a lot of fuel down there. And just today, the Department of Transportation Highways Division did a cut down there. So there's a big fire break and again, shout out to Senator Kedani.
Great news on vegetation maintenance. Double time. Okay, are there any other members from the community who wish to report of any events or concerns within the community? I see Karumi has her hand up. Please go, Karumi. Sorry. Go ahead. Karumi, you're muted. Sorry. We're experiencing some major feedback. Is there some kind of audio or visual issue on your end?
I tried everything.
Okay, would you please, because it is significant feedback, why don't you go ahead and put your question or concern in the chat and I will speak on your behalf if that's okay? That being said, while we wait for member Ka'apana Aki, are there any other members of the community who would like to report of any events or concerns within the community at this time? Yes. Member Flores for a second time.
Yes, I was notified by some of my neighbors. We live in the Ridge area, 300 homes. During the dry period, there was a lot of dust being blown over from Ko'ra Ridge and it's now dry again, so it's starting to blow over again. So that's just a concern from several of our neighbors who are living right off the Ridge area in Ke'apak Gout. So maybe we will contact Senator and see what we can do. Thank you, Senator.
Member Flores, I believe this might be more appropriate during the Senator's report.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I'm going to go ahead and read Member Ka'apana Aki's event and concern. She writes Superintendent Hayashi said he would get back to us on the access between the high school parking lot and gym for the young children walking to Mililani Waiana Elementary School from Mihaila Parkway. Yes, I see that and there is no representative at this time from the State Department of Education or from the state government. So what we can do is we can relay this back. I can send that again to the governor's rep. Karumi again states that there's a bright light at the stadium, still a nuisance throughout the evening hours. We will relay that again. Any further community members who would like to report of any events or concerns within the community at this time? All right, seeing none. Going to move on to the elected, oh, the presentation of community service awards. Members, as with protocol of the Mililani Neighborhood Board and past, and customary practices from the past, when members of our board no longer serve on our board, we typically provide them certificate of service. So at this point in time, I'd like to recognize the certificate of Neighborhood Board service to Karen Loomis, Kate Ozawa, Alex Ozawa, and Partner Akiona as our neighborhood assistant. To begin, I will start with Karen Loomis. I have been in touch with Karen and she's unable to attend tonight. Something came up today. She was planning to attend and sends her regrets and salutations to all of us on the board. So we will mail this to her with the NCO support. So we present this certificate of recognition on behalf of the Neighborhood Commission and the Mililani Waipio Melamalu Neighborhood Board Number 25 to Karen Loomis, Neighborhood Board Member, for her outstanding service as a member of the Neighborhood Board 25, her dedication and contributions of 19 years to the Mililani Waipio Melamalu communities are truly appreciated by the residents of Central Oahu, Mahalenui Loa, signed by myself as well as Lloyd Yoninaka, Executive Secretary, on this date, September 27, 2023. So we're going to go ahead and mail that to her. Now I'm going to note that we have both Alex and Kate here tonight. But what we're going to do is for picture-taking, we're going to do that after the adjournment. So you guys have to stay throughout the whole meeting. But well, without further ado, I'd like to present this certificate of recognition on behalf of the Neighborhood Commission and the Mililani Waipio Melamalu Neighborhood Board Number 25 to Alex Ozawa, Neighborhood Board Member, for your service as a member of the Neighborhood Board 25 and your contributions to the Mililani Waipio Melamalu communities and that are appreciated by the residents of Central Oahu, Mahalenui Loa, signed by myself and Lloyd Yoninaka, the Executive Secretary of the NCO, on this date, September 27, 2023. Oh, now you join us. Okay, we're going to move on to Kate. On behalf of the Neighborhood Board Commission and the Mililani Waipio Melamalu Neighborhood Board Number 25, we hereby present this certificate of recognition to Kate Ozawa, Neighborhood Board Member, for your service as a member of the Neighborhood Board 25 and your contributions to the Mililani Waipio Melamalu communities are appreciated by the residents of Central Oahu, Mahalenui Loa, Mahalenui Loa, signed by myself and Lloyd Yoninaka, Executive Secretary of the Neighborhood Commission Office, on this date, September 27, 2023. Thank you. And did Partner tune in? I was nagging him all week, folks, to tune in, but you know, now he doesn't get paid to tune into the Neighborhood Board meetings. So calling Partner? Okay, seeing none. You know, Partner really helped us through a lot of turbulence, members, and so I thought it was especially important to recognize Partner for his service through this certificate of recognition on behalf of the Neighborhood Commission and the Mililani Waipio Melamalu Neighborhood Board Number 25. We hereby present this certificate of recognition to Partner Akiona, Neighborhood Assistant, for his service as a neighborhood assistant to the Mililani Waipio Melamalu Neighborhood Board. For his service as a neighborhood assistant to the Milani YPO Melamani Neighborhood Board Number Twenty-Five, his support and contributions are appreciated by the residents of Central Oahu Mahalenui Loa, Partner, signed by myself and Lloyd Yoninaka, Executive Secretary of the NCO on this date, September twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-three. So like Karen Loomis's certificate, given the fact that Partner, who is an East Oahu resident, is not here, we will mail this. Or perhaps he can range um, some kind of pickup with the NCO office and see his former employer. But I would, I'd like to ma- give some applause and recognition to Partner too. Thank you, everyone. And so Alex and Kate hang out for the adjournment of the meeting where we'll take some pictures, okay? We're gonna move on to the elected officials' report. I'd like to uh, welcome Nestor Garcia, if he's here, to present on behalf of Congressman Ed Case. Okay, seeing that he's not here, uh, he has provided a report to the NCO staff and that will be available on our Google Drive as a neighborhood board. Next, I'd like to uh, recognize Tony Schwartz, uh, the Governor's Representative, representing uh, Governor Josh Green. I wa- I did receive an email from Tony, uh, due to the Lahaina, the ongoing Lahaina emergency and fires. The state, uh, the governor has activated all public information officers to provide um, support and assistance to that emergency. So Tony is unavailable tonight. She will be providing a report to our board and we will put that on the Google Drive. Um, and if there are any questions, please feel free to direct them to me or um, Spencer, and we can send that along to Tony. Okay. Moving on, I'd like to recognize Tracy Kubota, who's here with us tonight, representing Mayor Rick Blandiardi. Welcome, Tracy. Come on down.
Good evening, Chair Members. Tracy Kubota, Mayor Rick Blandiardi's representative. Um, so few things, I know the mayor's report was available and we have um, some highlights from them. Just wanted to make sure that people understood, there's a new lifeguard tower at Kahai Point Beach Park, um, also known as Electric Beach, which has been in the news recently, um, installed in August, and it's the first in eleven years, which expands the total of the lifeguard towers to forty-two throughout the island. And the tower is immediately staffed and they did their first rescue two hours immediately after they started. Few uh, follow-up questions from last month. So first I'll start with um, the overgrowth vegetation at the corner of Hoku Levaloup and Koahilani Avenue. So this one from Department of Facility Maintenance, they're saying that the vegetation at the corner of Hoku Levaloup and Koahilani is the budding property owner's responsibility. Um, they referred to Department of Planning and Per- Permitting's Residential Code Enforcement Branch, uh, that's gonna investigate the complaints. Um, DPP uh, did investigate and revealed that the branches of the private trees are, are, are growing into the sidewalk area and over the road. And so they issued a notice of violation for the private tree branches going over, um, for, you know, them to be able to address the issue. Um, the tree replacement question from Board Member Kanehei at the area of Koahilani and Koloapan Meheula. So there, this is a multiple response. Um, let me start with the fact that Department of Parks and Recreation, Division of Urban Forestry, went out and they're trying to figure out the exact locations of where the trees were removed from that need to be replanted. So they're asking for um, a map or, and/or exact locations of it, which would then help them to figure out what's suitable and if deemed suitable, um, you know, where they're gonna plant their appropriate trees. So um, if we could get a follow-up from Board Member Kanehei or anybody else who can provide some of that information for that. Um, they, they reminded that according to um, ordinance says, yeah, every property owner who's not abuts or joins a public street shall continue to maintain and keep area passable, clean, and free from weeds and noxious growths, a sidewalk and gutter area which abuts or joins the property's owner's property. So that's, you know, for maintenance of the area. Um, Department of Planning and Permitting also made note that any property who abuts that is responsible. So we just wanna be clear that the area is identified so we can make determinations as to what's appropriate, suitable, or possible. Um, thank you, Mr. Aoyong, for the update on Pioneer Place. You know, I got the report from Parks and Recreation and they said they were gonna complete by the end of the month, so apparently they have and things are moving forward. So thank you, I'm glad to hear that. And from Environmental Services, um, the member, uh, Board Member Kim had asked about the sewer rate increases and if there's anything that's happening in the foreseeable future. Um, and Environmental Services is currently performing a sewer rate study to determine the department's revenue requirements over the next five to ten years, and this is something they do regularly. Um, additional revenue would be needed to finance upcoming major improvements to the Oahu's wastewater collection and treatment infrastructure and at the, and a rate study will help determine approximately how much revenue is needed. Um, after the study is completed, sometime within the next twelve to eighteen months, ENB will propose a five-year rate package to the City Council. And if approved, the sewer rates would increase by a certain percent every year over the five-year period. The rate increase would, could take effect beginning twenty-twenty-five or twenty-twenty-six. And ENB will communicate more information to the public as the schedule becomes clearer. So wait to see um, what that rate study provides. Then there was a question for a member among who's um, concerned about the Maui wildfires and if the city county of Honolulu focused on following up on any of the island's evacuation procedures to avoid similar catastrophes. So Department of Emergency Management, along with um, in support of Mayor's Office, had responded that the mayor has tasked the city departments to work under the leadership of Managing Director um, Mike Farmby to review and identify known and evolving risks for wildfires in Oahu. Um, we'll most certainly be reviewing and updating alert and warning protocols as well as evacuation procedures in this process, and will also be providing additional outreach and education on this subject. Um, work is already currently underway with the mayor, managing director, deputy managing director, and leadership from um, um, emergency management, fire, police, border water, and facilities maintenance. And they are going to ensure that the disaster preparedness plans incorporate current assessments, policies, and procedures for wildfire threats in light of increasing heat and drought precautions and trends. Um, and that completes the responses. I'll be willing to take back any questions for next month.
Thank you, Tracy. I see that Josie quickly raised her hand.
Okay.
Um, probably to respond to your question. Go ahead, Josie.
Uh, Aloha, I'll send the information to Chair Bass so that she can forward it to you. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, I will note that uh, second was Karumi Kaupana Aki asked in the chat. Uh, I'll ask on her behalf, if the city is still offering free tow-away service for abandoned vehicles, if so, what number can be called?
I can get that for you. Um, there, they do. There is an AV towing, but there's also something online that you can put in the make, model, description, license plate number, whatever, of the car and the address and the location, and they will send an inspector out. Um, that's specifically for AV, but if it's suspected to be stolen or you're not sure, call HPD. But I can get all the information and send it to you.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, members, are there any other questions for Tracy? Elise?
Yeah, a couple of months ago, I asked about a bus shelter over, bus shelters over on the, actually it was on the Malka side. Gee. And I haven't heard anything back.
Last month, I think, a provider response. Let me go check if we did follow up with that, but I thought we did last month, so get back to you on that.
I wasn't here last month.
Okay.
And the trouble is with the new minutes, they don't actually report the question and answers.
I see. Okay. Let me just double-check that and I'll get back to you on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, I see that Anne Fried has her hand up. Go ahead, Anne.
Yeah, thanks for your excellent service as usual, Tracy. Glad you're here. Um, so you, you heard my discussion with the, um, with HPD. So and I, you partially answered what I was gonna ask, I think. So, so I'm gonna ask first, uh, firstly, two, so two parts. It is this, it's the mayor's got a task force, and then my second part is is uh, HPD gonna be included in looking for fireworks? Because fireworks right now is probably the primary pro- hazard that would start a wildfire in any of our neighborhoods. So is, is there a task force? Should there be a task force? And if there is a task force, I'm thinking I will go with Chair Bass and uh, we need to write a resolution for that effect.
So I didn't hear the first part really clearly, but I'm understanding there's a task force that you're wondering if they're gonna establish to.
John, I'm, I'm wondering if what you've mentioned, the mayor convening, is a task force?
Oh, okay, that's for the, the fires, yeah? We were talking about that. Okay, okay. So you wanna know what they're convening as far as that is, or the team of people that are part of that?
Hold on. Um, is there a, Anne, let me just clarify, we're having some audio problems. Tracy mentioned a fire task force.
Not fireworks.
You are talking about a fireworks task force?
No, I'm talking about adding fireworks as an issue into that fire.
Okay, Tracy.
Okay, I can check, but I think they're specifically speaking to like, safety and wildfires, but you're saying that if fireworks are igniting things to cause fires, is that why you're saying for them to consider that?
Exactly.
Okay, I will bring that up for that purpose. Thank you. I'll check.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions for the city and county and Tracy at this time? Are there any questions from the members of the audience? Oh, I see that Member Kanehei raised her hand. Go ahead.
It's just one of the statements. I'm sorry, we found, um, Waikia Waka one day. These people were blowing up the fireworks. It actually caused a fire right there by the cemetery that we witnessed and had to call HPD for it. It's just a matter of info. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the city and county? From members of the audience?
Danny, follow up?
Oh, okay, Anne, we, I couldn't see you. Okay, uh, yes, please, uh, quickly with your follow-up.
Yeah, so, so Tracy, can you hear me?
I can, somewhat.
Okay. So when you said, would I like to know, would, yes, we would like to know the members of that. So I'm assuming it include, it should include HPD and uh, you know, uh, the fire department as a, as a bare minimum. Right? Let us know who's on.
So just, just to be clear that they have um, already like established this group that included the mayor, managing director, deputy managing director, and um, emergency management, fire, police, border water, and facility maintenance.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions for a city? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much, Tracy. Alright, we're going to recognize and welcome Councilmember Val Okimoto's office. I see that Jamie is here.
Good evening, Chair, Senator Kidani, Representative Lee, members of the board. My name's Jamie Shadell from Councilmember Val Okimoto's office. She's unable to attend this evening. There's an IAA Pearl City Town Hall that's being held tonight. I have uh, state legislature slate tours from those areas. Uh, next city council meeting will be held on Wednesday, October fourth, at ten AM, but the location has changed to Kapolehale. Uh, that starts at ten o'clock, honorary certificates at uh, nine AM. Final bills on the agenda include the Bill Forty-Six, the vaping ban, that's uh, but there's a preemption at the state legislature, but that bill's gonna move forward. There's also the residential parking zone program that's gonna be on final reading and among other measures. Councilmember Okimoto recently introduced a bill to do a property tax assessment cap at uh, two percent for uh, Pu'Puna age sixty-five or older to help with uh, some property tax relief. We're also taking a look at the property tax credit. Uh, constituent from Pearl City pointed out a significant issue with the language in the definitions for income that we're gonna take a look at to see if that credit can be applied for more real property taxpayers. Uh, a follow-up to the previous question for abandoned vehicles, that phone number is seven six eight two five three zero, seven six eight two five three zero. And as a follow-up to the commandment highway issue, District Two is gonna follow up with District Three regarding that. We also had somebody reach out to our office concerning that issue. District Three did go out. Um, but I'm guessing they went during the day, so the truck wasn't there, but we'll follow up with them as well. Uh, pending any questions, just stand on the written report.
Thank you, Jamie. Members, are there any questions for Councilmember Okimoto's office? Seeing none, members of the audience, are there any questions for Councilmember Okimoto's office? Okay, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to Councilmember Wire's office. Is Kelly, I see Kelly online. Please, welcome Kelly. Please proceed with the, your report on behalf of Councilmember Wire.
Good evening, Chair. I'm sorry, can you hear me? Okay?
Uh, no, we, we're having some trouble. You need to speak up a little more.
A bit closer?
Yes, it's great.
Can you hear me now? Okay, great.
Yes.
Good evening, Chair Bass and members of the board. Um, Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wire's office. Um, just a couple legislative updates, um, on bills that Councilmember has introduced. Um, he has Bill Fifty-Five, which incentivizes the use of gray water for new housing projects. It's currently awaiting its first reading and should be on the agenda for next full council's meeting, which um, like Jamie mentioned, is next week, Wednesday, October fourth. Um, we also have Bill Forty-Six, which bans the flavored tobacco products, including vaping and electronic smoking devices. Um, this has passed out of committee and should be up for final reading again next week, um, Wednesday at the full council. Um, Bill Forty-Seven, which would allow putting manufactured compostable materials in our green waste bins. Um, this one should also be up for um, second reading at next full council next week. Um, Bill Forty-Six and Forty-Seven are assigned to the Housing Sustainability and Health Committee, and Bill Fifty-Five is assigned to the zoning committee. And lastly, Councilmember wanted to um, remind everybody, if you haven't already filed for the homeowner exemption and tax credits, the deadline is Monday, October second. If you have any questions for a council member, I'd be happy to take it back for her.
Okay, members, any questions for Kelly from Councilmember Wire's office? I see Anne has her hand up. Go ahead, Anne.
So same issue, um, Kelly. So um, that is new, but you know, he, I like the direction he's headed in. So I'm thinking that the council should be asking the mayor for a report on the results of this committee that's investigating how to take, how to prevent us happening Lahaina happening here. So, you would take that back to him?
And uh, you have my. A report on, on what committee? I'm sorry, I could barely hear.
The mayor is got a committee or not a task force, I've forgotten what it's called, a group that is it, that is putting together information on, on the danger of wildfire on Oahu. Alright, and I've asked them to add fireworks to that because what I'm hearing is they're not spending that as a problem. So I'm asking what is that, that perhaps the council and our elected representatives from our area should be asking the mayor for a report of the results of that investigation.
Okay. I'll, I'll see what we can do.
Alright, thank you, uh, Anne and Kelly. Members, are there any other questions for Kelly from Councilmember Wire's office? Seeing none, are there any uh, questions from the public and audience for Councilmember Wire's office? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much, Kelly, for your time.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to Senator Michelle Kidani, who is here with us tonight. Welcome, Senator.
Aloha, Ahi Ahi, Chair and members of the Neighborhood Board. Um, I wanted to start my presentation tonight on, on my report by um, saying a big mahalo to the Milani community. Um, two Saturdays after the Lahaina fires, I hosted a um, community event at the, at this high school, you know, asking the Milani community to donate uh, goods for our uh, Lahaina residents. And hmm, we ended up with thirty-eight. Lahaina residents and, hmm, we ended up with 38 pallets of clothing, canned goods, toiletries, you know, diapers for babies, et cetera. And it was so heartwarming, because we spent about, um, maybe from eight to one that, that morning and afternoon. And we also had donations that totaled, um, that day $1,200, but, uh, if you look at my report, you'll see this very nice t-shirt that says Mililani Loves Maui. Designed by my daughter and to date we've sold over 600 shirts with a profit of $10 that goes, has gone to the uh, Hawaii Community Foundation for, for Maui. So I just wanted to thank the community for coming out to do those things for our friends on Maui. Um, we are not in session, but during this time of the year, we normally go on, uh, field trips to the neighbor islands, et cetera, to look at what possibly we're going to do with some of our, uh, money for different projects on, on the neighbor islands, so, you know, we visited Kauai, we visited Maui, I was actually in Maui a couple days after the fire, uh, with superintendent. Um, while we couldn't go into Lahaina, we know that the, the elementary school there, uh, King Kamia Mera 3 was totally destroyed, there is just no hope to rebuild it. Um, which meant we also had to look at places for where they're going to rebuild an elementary school. And they have found a site in, uh, someplace called Pulelehua, which is more towards Kaanapali, on the opposite side of Lahaina. Um, in the meantime, the students there will be going to, uh, Nahina Ena, Lahaina Luna High School, and Lahaina Middle School. Um, to make sure that, and also, um, more children are being, uh, taught online at their request, parents have, um, not wanted to release their kids to, um, the DOE schools at this time, I think, you know, the traumatic experience. Um, I have never known, and I'm sure many of us have never known, but, um, uh, it's something that, that the DOE is trying to make sure that we have enough, uh, um, teachers, et cetera, to do those online classes for those students. Um, we have also, um, were able to visit the, um, Hikam Air Force Base Military YMCA, which was very heartwarming, they have a nice preschool program, uh, Tutu and Me Program. Um, this is, uh, to encourage the development and enhance bonds between, of course, the parents and their children. And this program is working towards preschool accreditation, which aligns with Lieutenant Governor Sylvia Luke's, uh, Pre-Cakey Ready Program. Um, we also, they also have a food pantry for their, their milit- military dependents who are in need of some of those, um, extra goodies and, and food things that they are not able to get on their own with their limited income. Um, I also had an opportunity to, uh, visit Waikeli Elementary Career and College Fair, it was really interesting, because, uh, Waikeli Elementary School invites all these different, um, programs such as, well, they had nurses, they had teachers there, they had other, um, the, the military was there, doctors, and this is to encourage, um, the students to think of what they may want to be, and this is, I think, the fifth year that they've done it. And it's very, very interesting to see how the children react to some of these, like, um, one of the nurses was a male nurse and a young boy, I was happy to be standing there, and a young boy walked up and said, are you a doctor? And the male nurse replied, no, I'm a nurse. And he says, boys aren't nurses, only girls are nurses. And they had a little conversation, and I thought that was really cool, because this was really news for this, um, little boy. Someday may be one of our nurses. Um, I also wanted to, um, let you know that we did go into special session to, uh, confirm some judges, which we normally do during special session, uh, when there are more judges appointed or new judges appointed to the judiciary, and there were four, uh, different appointments, um, at this time. Um, we also did, uh, together with our, um, DBED, Department of Business and Economic Development, did a trip to Japan, um, to encourage, because Japanese visitors are one of the most prolific, prolific visitors to our, our state. And we wanted them to know that we are open for business, Maui is open for business, but not Lahaina. And we were, uh, some of us did interviews with some of the radio and TV stations there in Japan, so I think it was a great trip. At the same time, there was also, um, the Hawaii Tourism Industry had their, um, big show that they do once a year there in Japan, it was very well attended, it was a huge, I can't even explain how many people were there, but it's a huge, um, convention center. And there were so many of, uh, Hawaii businesses there, that was really heartwarming to see them at least, um, getting some business, and, you know, we have been very hurt because people are not coming here thinking that we're off limits, so, um, I encourage you to make sure that you tell your family on the mainland and wherever they are that Hawaii and Maui is still open for business, just not Lahaina. Um, and the other reason for the trip to Japan was, um, I had about two years ago given some, or put some funds into a group called Peas on Your Wings, and it's, um, for young children, and it's, it's a story about Sadako who lived in Hiroshima at the time of the nuclear bomb. It was very, very well received in Hiroshima, they had a 20-minute standing ovation. There were tears in the eyes of most of the people that, uh, were there in the audience that started the, the, uh, children that were participating in the performance to also start crying, so applause for 20 minutes, crying for 20 minutes, it was all great, and I hope we get a chance to do something here again, um, on Oahu or in the state of Hawaii, because it's, it was very well received. And I wanted to finish with a tribute to the late Police Chief Lee Donahue, our eighth police chief. Um, he was also a council member for a little while, and as you, interestingly enough, we're talking about the aerial fireworks. It was during his, I think, eight months there at the city council that he was able to get a ban on aerial fireworks after 20 years of trying. Um, and yes, we still have problems with it, but it is illegal to have aerial fireworks, so, um, during, you know, uh, different times of the year that, that we have now, anyway. He was probably the only police chief that rose from every rank in the department to become police chief. And I just wanted you all to know, um, how well respected he was, and he was a good friend, and we really miss him. Thank you very much, I'll take questions.
Thank you Senator, uh, I'm gonna open up to questions, Leslie, go ahead.
Uh, do you know, uh, the count of the missing children in Lahaina right now, is, anybody ever come forward to you guys and, um, gave you a specific number?
Missing children? Uh, I know that there was one death confirmed for sure, but the problem is, is that parents just are not ready to send their children back to school, so they have a lot of children online, which is what they're providing. Um, but I think of the 3,000 something students in that area, they only like 1,900 or so have actually gone back to school or are online, so there's about 1,000 children who have decided not to participate in school at all. So whatever the reasons may be, and I, I know it's a lot to do with trauma, a lot to do with, uh, they may not have clothing or shelter that they feel comfortable going to school with. New students and being asked questions about how they survive and things like that, so it is very, very traumatic.
So there really is no official count as of yet?
Well, they know all the students that used to be in school that are not in school, and it's about 1,000.
The, the lost number of children, like, nobody knows how many children had perished in the fires yet, uh, is there official count?
As far as I know, there has been only one name released, and that was just the other day, an 11-year-old boy, but.
One name only released, I see.
Released, there may be.
Just released, yeah, yeah, one released, yeah, okay, thank you.
Members, are there any other questions for Senator Kidani, Member Flores?
Hi Senator, thank you for your service. Um, I was a little premature with that statement, but that was just a, um, comment from one of my neighbors, that's why, because I live in that bridge area too. And like I said, uh, prior to summer, we had those really, really windy periods, and that's kind of when, in the middle of it, so it still continues to blow over from Koa Ridge, and, you know, my neighbors have video of, um, clouds of dust that was blowing over, so, um, eh, you know, like I mentioned, I'd like to, you know, work with you or have our, my neighbors also work with you on this, and, you know, we provide, um, the, the, some pictures and videos, so you can actually see it, I mean, it's, it's not all the time, I, I know that, um, one of my neighbors did speak with Castle and Cook, and they were, um, trying to mitigate it with water, and they put, but, you know, it's just, if you go on H2 freeway, you see these mounds of dirt, that's why, yeah, so i- it's just a concern within that neighborhood, but.
Yeah, and I think the only thing I can offer right now off the top of my head, Ed, is that, um, could ask the Department of Health to come out on a day that is really windy? And just check quality of the air, et cetera, you know, something we probably want to do, but then, and maybe with their help, they can encourage, uh, the developers to be, um, you know.
No, good suggestion, we did call, um, Air Quality Department of Health, and I think we need to follow up. Thank you.
Thank you, members, are there any other questions for Senator Kidani? I see Anne has her hand up, go ahead Anne.
Yeah. Uh, aloha Senator, so good to see you in, in the, in the flesh almost. Um, thank you much again for your continued service, I really appreciate it, so you've probably heard my talking about the fireworks thing, so, most of that, most of what I, what we're talking about belongs with the city and county, but, uh, remind me, who is responsible for port inspections, is that DOT? Because I'm thinking the state could do something to beef off the inspections of containers coming in, HPD has a point that stop it at the source.
Yeah, it, it is, uh, Department of Transportation. The problem is, is that they have tried, uh, sniffing dogs, you know, we had a public safety committee years ago, when Chief Donahue was alive and the police chief, um, to talk about how this illegal fireworks is coming in. One of the issues they have is that they use the same containers over and over, you know, to bring in the fireworks and whatever, during the time when it's legal to sell. Dogs noses are so sensitive, they'll, they'll point out all these crates that have been used previously, but when they check them, there's no fireworks, but they did, they did try that at one time.
So, I don't, put it on your radar, I know you will, but to find a way to, to get at the problem at the port level, because it, well, I don't have to tell you, I mean, this could happen here so easily, just that I don't want to think, you know, we get some places, we think it can't happen here, because clearly it's.
Okay, I'll look into that, yes. Thank you, Anne.
Members, are there any other questions for Senator Kidani at this time? Seeing none, are there any members of the audience or members of the public who would like to ask a question to the Senator? Seeing none, thank you so much for your thorough report.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to, uh, Senator Donovan Dela Cruz's office with Alex Ozawa, uh, presenting Senator Dela Cruz's report.
Thank you Chair, members of the board, my name is Alexander Ozawa, I am employed by the State Senate for this, uh, as a support staff for the Committee on Ways and Means, I'm here on behalf of Senator Dela Cruz to give his report. Um, first off, you know, like, once again, the tragedy in Lahaina is really top of mind right now, in the short, medium, and long term, the rebuilding efforts, the immediate needs of the community, that is top of mind right now, um, I just want to, before I begin my report, I want to address a question from Member Among for Senator Kidani, um, about the missing children in Lahaina, so I have here from the Maui News, um, reported September 23rd that the latest, uh, list of missing people has dropped to 22, and only one of them was listed as a minor, so, that's the answer I have, I know you didn't direct the question at me, but, um, that's an answer, um, that I'm happy to give. Um, in lighter news, uh, today, earlier today, the state of Hawaii started construction on the new civic center in Wahihua. It will serve all of central Oahu and the North Shore for, uh, DMV, Satellite City Hall, court services. Um, it's, the project started three years ago, when the legislator, legislature appropriated $76 million for the project. Um, so, we're glad to see that, um, kicking off, construction starting, um, and lastly, uh, once again, Senator Dela Cruz has a newsletter, uh, you can email Dela Cruz to at capital.hawaii.gov to subscribe, there's a lot of, um, good articles they're pushing out recently, there's stuff about Lahaina, economic recovery, about, um, creating career pathways that keep our graduates living, working, living and working here at home, that's the title of one of them, so yeah, I recommend you subscribe to the newsletter, and I am open to any questions.
Thank you Alex, and thank you for following up to, uh, Member Among's question to Senator Kidani. Members, are there any questions at this time for Senator Donovan Dela Cruz's office? Seeing none, are there any members of the audience or the members of the public who have any questions to, uh, direct to Senator Donovan Dela Cruz's office? Seeing none, thank you so much for your present, your report. We're gonna move on to Representative Amy Peruso, I see that she's available online.
Aloha. Hi.
Welcome, please proceed with your report, thank you.
Thank you, um, so, there's a lot going on in the wake of, um, the Lahaina fires, and I think, uh, I, last time I shared, and also, uh, Rep Lachika shared about, um, the working groups that the houses formed. I'm serving on to the wildfire prevention working group, and then also the environmental remediation working group. So I, we are talking about fireworks, I think Anne will be happy to know, um, and, um, really cracking down on that, and I'm really focused, because Wahihua is surrounded by agricultural lands that are not, are notoriously, um, not very well managed. Um, we, I am really taking a close look at that, so we've recently been working with the governor's office to get monies released to fund ADC's, um, efforts to decrease fuel load, because we still have some months ahead of us in the hurricane season. And, um, to wait for next session to be completed, uh, just, uh, was not, uh, not, um, conceivable for me. I had a high state of anxiety, having watched the fires at Kukonuloko burn so close to Whitmore Village. Um, so, that work is happening, we're also, um, getting ready for session, and I will mention that we're having a community town hall, um, for the Wahihua, Whitmore Village, Launani Valley, YPO Acres area, um, at Ka'ala Elementary on October 5th, we'll be joined by Lieutenant Governor Sylvia Luke, and, um, by Chair Al Maladi, who will be, um, Chair of Health, so we'll be talking about community resilience and the work that, and, and this is a, a town hall that's being put on by, um, com- uh, Councilmember Wire and myself, so we're kind of joining forces, looking at the ways in which our responsibilities overlap, and how we can, um, listen to community members' concerns, and also your ideas for the upcoming, uh, 2024 session. Uh, so I'll, I'll end there, there, there's a lot more to say, I, I feel like I could speak for half an hour, but, um, I'm waiting for questions.
Thank you Representative Peruso, members, are there any questions for the representative? Yes, Member Lee, or Marilyn Lee, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Representative, what time is this meeting?
Oh, I apologize, um, it's at 6 o'clock, it goes from 6 o'clock to 7:30, and we will be, um, sampling, uh, poo poo based on, from local farmers, based on produce from local farmers, um, prepared by Lelehua's culinary program.
Very good, thank you so much.
Thank you, members, are there any other questions for the representative? Thank you. Members, are there any other questions for the representative? Seeing none, are there any members of the audience or public who has any questions for Representative Peruso at this time? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much, Representative Peruso, for being with us tonight online.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to Representative Lauren Matsumoto. I see that she is also online. Representative Matsumoto, welcome. Please proceed with your report.
Thank you. Sorry, not able to join you all in person today. But quickly for the report, like Rep Peruso mentioned, we have the Maui working groups, really happy about that bipartisan working groups. Worked a lot with Speaker to make those happen. And so I sit on the wildfire group. And so if you have any questions about that, I'd also like to, there's a lot of information we've been getting and pamphlets to disseminate information. They have a really great handout for Kupuna and making sure that your homes are safe. And so I'll, if I can send that to you, Chair Bass, that if you can disseminate that information, I think that would be something that would be really helpful. Also, if you go to repmatsumoto.com and sign up for our newsletter, we will be pushing that information out as well. I wanted to thank everybody who came out, you know, Chair Bass and others who came to our listening here. It was very informative. We had about 85 people who came out to that listening tour at the Milani High School cafeteria two Thursdays ago. And last but not least, I'll send this as well. But we're doing our Capitol Talkin' Tour again, and that will be on Wednesday, October 11th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon. You need to go to repmatsumoto.com to RSVP. We already have 70 people who've RSVP'd for the Talkin' Tour, and it's a time to tour the Capitol, but also to learn about the legislative process so that you're able to better be involved for the 2024 session. And with that, I will wrap up my report. If there are any
Thank you, Representative Matsumoto. Yes, I actually definitely enjoyed the Hawaii House GOP meeting in central Oahu. I learned a lot, and thank you for inviting all of us to attend. Members, are there any questions for Representative Matsumoto? Yes, Member Ross.
I just want to add a quick question. So on your fire committee that you guys are discussing, I know you're saying you're getting a lot of information. Are you giving that information to homeowner associations, especially, like I'm just going to use Milani because this is where we live, because they're in charge of creating those fire lanes and fire gaps to make sure the fire doesn't transfer over. There, a lot of their area and spaces, especially for a lot of different HO ways, it's pretty much their responsibility for doing that. Are they brought into these meetings? Are you passing information on to these meetings? Or is this more, you guys will post it, and then it's their responsibility to get it? Or how is that communication going?
So right now, we are being briefed by like the State Fire Council, DLNR, different groups, and our committee will have a draft report done in October and a final report done in November. And then the committees are going to decide how to disseminate that information. But the main goal of the committees is to have legislation for the 2024 session. But there will be a lot of information coming out. But I can also share our report when we finish with MTA.
Thank you. Members, are there any other questions for Representative Matsumoto? Hey, seeing none, are there any members of the audience and public who have any questions for Representative Matsumoto at this time? Seeing none. Thanks so much for being here online, Representative.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to Representative Trish Lachica's office. I see there's a representative on her behalf here tonight. Please introduce yourself for the record and proceed with the report.
Good evening, Chair. Thank you. My name is Jared Ellis. I'm here on behalf of Representative Trish Lachica. She passes on her regards. She is actually at the National Conference of State Legislators on behalf of Speaker Psyke at the moment. So she wishes she could be here, but you're going to have to put up with me for the evening. I apologize in advance. Just to kind of piggyback on what Representative Matsumoto was mentioning, you know, the goal is legislation, and there, there's a December 15th due date on that. And then once that is, you know, progressed, you know, the, the general public will have an opportunity to offer comments, offer suggestions prior to the start of the next legislative session. In terms of community concern issues and things that were brought to our office, the Koa Ridge bus situation with the DOE was a big issue for us. We were very fortunate that Rep Lachica was able to work with DOE and other stakeholders, and we were able to get a bus line set up to Pro City High School from the Koa Ridge community. And so we're very pleased with that. Right now, we are waiting on an update from the DOE on a further action. They are very busy. We understand that. We are, something we are following up on. Last month, we actually got another report about a homeless encampment in Kipapa Gulch, believe it was along mile marker 15. So we've been working with both the Chief Zero, HPD, and the US Army Garrison Hawaii. They did a first clearing on September 12th, and our office was there to do outreach work. There is a lot of leftover debris there that we're still working to get addressed, but we do hope to see some more movement on that in the coming weeks and months. Other than that, I'm happy to, you know, take any questions back to the representative, or can, if I can answer, I'd be happy to this evening.
Thanks so much, Jared. Members, are there any questions for Representative Lachica's office and Jared here? Don't all rush for it. Okay. Members of the audience or the public, are there any questions for Representative Lachica's office? Oh, excuse me. Could you introduce yourself for the record and direct a question? Thank you.
I'm Anne. Um, yeah, in, in regards to that encampment that's been there for a while, it's definitely a fire hazard. So why can't we just cut the brush down?
Hold on, Jared. Back at the microphone. Thank you. We have audience members and, and for O'lelo.
The one thing I would say is that it is very sensitive in that the jurisdiction of the land is an issue. So we, the city, for example, can't go in there and just clear it because we want to. Right now, it has to go through, I don't want to say federal government, but Army Garrison Hawaii. So we're working directly with them. I think our main point of contact is Selena Jentikowski. She's a public information, Public Affairs Information Officer there. And we actually just spoke with the Colonel in charge there, the Commander Officer who's helping us to set up another meeting. The main issue was to get people out and make sure that we had offered them services, but the debris is an issue that's going to take both manpower and funding. So it's something we're still working on.
So as a public person resident.
Sorry, Anne. Anne, could you talk in the microphone? We, it's for the benefit of O'lelo.
As a resident in that area, what can we do to help, or who do we call? Your office?
Be happy to talk with you offline tomorrow, but
Hey, guys, we're having some real audio issues.
Sorry, that's my fault.
Into the microphone.
Be happy to meet with you and talk about this more offline, but we appreciate any support we can get. Thanks. My fault.
Okay, members, any further questions for Representative Lachica's office?
Yes.
Member Dow.
Uh, we're a little confused. Where is this homeless encampment?
So it's a near mile marker 15 along Commandment Highway. I haven't actually physically been there. I just started with the office last week, so you're going to have to forgive me. I'm not sure the exact mile, like where that mile marker is yet.
Okay, yeah, because there's, there's one that we're talking about, the, where that black pickup truck is. We're not sure if that's, is that the one?
I believe that is the one, yes.
Because that's Army property.
Correct.
Yeah. And they were also going down, you know, when he passed Kipapa Bridge, there's a service road to the right. They kept cutting the gate open.
Right.
Then the Army's been going in there and locking it regularly, and now it seems like it's locked all the time. So there is some, some type of movement by the Army, but not really sure.
You're absolutely right. There is movement in terms of dealing with the people and the individuals there, but the bigger issue is the sort of infrastructure they build on their own. You know, there's generators, there's electric power, so we have to be very careful about that. But there is jurisdictional things you have to worry about, and there is a funding issue that we have to address first.
And I just wanted to follow up to the member of the community who addressed the question, Anne. I wanted to confirm that that is the same encampment that Member Dow referenced. Okay, just for clarity sake for our listeners online. Before the Patsy Mink Central Oahu Park. Thank you. Any further questions for Representative Lachica's office, Member Flores?
Yeah, it's just a comment. I think when I drive by, I see a blue sign there. And I think blue signs indicate federal property. I think it's federal property, so.
It, it is. It's confirmed, yeah.
Yeah.
Under the jurisdiction of the US Army Garrison Hawaii.
Absolutely, right, so.
So we're very fortunate to be working with them, but there is, you know, there are barriers to quick action when it's interjurisdictional, I guess is the best way to say it.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Representative Lachica's office at this time? Oh, you got them all, Jared.
Hey, first one, you guys were easy on me. I really appreciate it. I'm sure I'll see you guys next month. Thank you.
We're going to make you work. Okay, um, I, I received a message from the mayor's rep, Tracy Kupota. She would like to follow up to a question, please. Follow up to the question at the microphone. Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you. So this is the abandoned vehicle question. So I got the information just so you can do it right away if you need to. So phone number 808-768-2530. You can report the abandoned vehicle. Or if you go to this online form at you can also fill it out, and it's one of those you can populate without having to talk to anybody. So just put in the make, model, license number, street address, that kind of stuff, and it'll walk you through it, and you hit submit, and they'll send someone out.
Thank you, Tracy. So that's following up to Board Member Karumi Kapanaki's question on abandoned vehicles. Karumi, did you hear that?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. All right, we are going to move on to board business. Members, as you may recall, in our August meeting, there was some discussion as to the board recess schedule. The Milli Neighborhood Board has allotted three recesses with the term year, July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024. For the record, we have already taken one recess in July of this year. So we have two left pursuant to the neighborhood plan. There was some previous discussion at the last meeting as to having a meet or a recess scheduled for November. There was also some discussion for a recess scheduled in December to just jog your memories. I'm going to open this up to discussion. Does anyone want to make a motion to this in terms of adopting our recess schedule? Yes, where I'm, I'm entertaining any motions from members who would like to adopt a recess for either November or December.
I have a motion for December.
A motion to recess in the December.
In December, like we always do.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Okay, seconded by Rep, uh, by Member Marilyn Lee. We're going to open it up to discussion, members. Discussion on a motion to recess in December 2023. Discussion? Hearing none, we're going to take it to a vote. Are there any members who would like to oppose the motion to recess in December 2023? Please raise your hand or take the microphone, saying your opposition. Okay, no, no opposed. Are there any members who would like to abstain? Abstained by Secretary Gustafson. Any other abstentions? Okay. The motion passes to recess this board in December 2023 with one abstention. We're going to move now on to the reports of chairs and board committees. Members, at the August meeting, you voted to approve the creation of the chairs and board committees. We did not have any chairs at this time. Or at the August 2023 meeting pursuant to the neighborhood plan, I, as the Chair of the Milli Neighborhood Board, I have appointed the following chairs as listed. In terms of our chair's report, uh, we're going to go now into the committee reports, so I will begin as Chair Report. In terms of my report, again, it's just to circle back to the meeting minutes, members. In terms of our meeting minutes, you will notice that questions, comments, and concerns were summarized by the NCO. There has been ongoing discussion between myself, the Secretary, and the NCO to elaborate on these questions and comments and concerns. There is apparently a new adoption in the minutes and summaries of the NCO to not list questions and comments and concerns. So that is the issue I have as a concern with that I've raised to the Neighborhood Commission Office, and we are continuing to be in discussion in terms of how we move forward to adopt more, uh, clearer minutes and summaries of the meeting minutes to include at least a bullet point and a subject of what was discussed. Not necessarily questions and answers, but a bullet point and a quick summary of the discussion. The NCO would also like, will have, has also shared that these meetings are available online, as well as on O'lelo, and so therefore the summaries and, or, and/or minutes, whatever you'd like to call them, will, are actually referenced by certain timestamps as identified in the minutes proposed. So that completes my report in terms of the ongoing issues to the new minutes. Are there any questions? It's really fun. No, no questions? Okay. We're going to move on to the Community Partnerships and Community Outreach Committee. I'd like to recognize Ryan Ozawa, Chair. Do you have any report at this time?
Specific report? Of course, we welcome anyone's suggestions as to what can be publicized or shared on our social media channels. I will be adding the October 10th job fair for the MWR recreational section of the military, for example. So if there are community events that you have mentioned, including the upcoming town halls, we'll be sure to spread the word.
Thank you, Ryan. Karumi, I see your hand is raised. Is that to ask a question to Ryan?
Yes, yes, I would.
Oh, please, go ahead.
Chair Ozawa, at this point, just a few minutes ago, I received a message from the YMCA asking to make a special announcement of this year's Halloween trunk and treat on October 10th, from 4:30 to 7:30 PM. There will be the regular trick-or-treating in the car trunks, costume contests, food trucks. There is a nominal fee if you're entering the game section. And there will be available parking at the high school parking lot free of charge. And if there's, for more information, they're asking that they be contacted at the Y at 808-275-4629. So I was hoping that we could help them in that effort to make that announcement on their behalf.
Absolutely. Perfect timing, Karumi. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
As a quick follow-up to that, Ryan, maybe you could share that on our social media platforms as well.
That's absolutely the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or follow-up to the Community Partnerships and Community Outreach Committee? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to Community Recognition and Service Awards. I've appointed, I've reappointed Josie Ka'anehe as Chair. Josie, do you have a report to provide?
No, I do not have a report. And if anybody wants to have someone recognized, please let us know. Also, I'd like to thank Ryan Ozawa for maintaining the social media platform. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Josie. Members, are there any questions for Josie at this time? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the Community Maintenance and Walk Seeing none, we're gonna move on to the Community Maintenance and Walk Audit Committee. Members, I've appointed Martina Segura as Chair. Martina, do you have a report to provide?
Other than contacting the NCO to get that Google Sheets throughout the Neighborhood Board Commission, no report.
Okay, thank you. Martina, perhaps while we have Kate Ozawa here, we can relay and connect the Google form and for the next mon... Okay, oh, you're already on it. Great. Okay, so what we'll do is we'll send out the Google form to start working on our community maintenance and walk audit as a board. And we will send that on to the NCO to distribute to all the board members. Thank you, Martina. Trevor is absent. He has been reappointed to the Planning and Zoning Sustainable Development and Climate Resilience Committee. I'm gonna move on to recognize the Transportation and OMPO Committee. At the request of our former committee chair, Elise, she has requested that Skylar Ross be appointed. So Skylar, take it away.
No updates at this time.
Are there any questions for Skylar in relation to transportation and OMPO? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to Military Affairs and Emergency Management. Members, we've had this committee vacant for some time due to the vacancy brought on by Bernie's sudden absence from our board. I've appointed Dennis Kim as Chair of this committee. Dennis, do you have anything to report at this time?
Just that, the main thing is with the fires in Oahu, I think there will be a lot more attention to emergency preparedness. And Bernie and I actually have put together a program. But I think it probably is, looking at it now, it's an overreach. And what we should probably do is find out what we could do to support existing emergency organizations and situations that we could come in and help. So I think what's gonna, I probably have to work with this, and that is to talk to both the military and the civilian organizations relative to still emergencies and disasters and all that. And so in the future, we'll probably be reporting more back.
Thank you, Dennis. Appreciate that. Are there any questions for Dennis? All right, we're looking forward to it. We're gonna move on to the Health Houselessness and Human Services Committee. Members, I've appointed Darsha Lee as Chair. Darsha, do you have any report to provide at this time? I see that Darsha's online, but perhaps she stepped away. Okay, we're gonna move on to the Parks and Recreation, Patsy Mink Central Oahu Regional Park Committee. I have reappointed Sabrina Gustafson as Chair of the committee. Sabrina, do you have any report to provide?
No report.
Okay, thank you. Members, any questions for Sabrina? Okay, seeing none. Thank you. And last but not least, for the Education Committee, oh, I wanted to blend that word. I've appointed Marilyn Lee as the Chair. Marilyn, do you have a report to provide for the Education Committee?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I do. And I'm very fortunate to have received reports from three schools. This is the beginning of the school year, so they do have something to say. First, Kipapa School. We have a new principal, Jamil Duarte, and she is very, very interested in sharing with the community. And I wanted to read part of her report to me. There are three pillars that I will continue to set my foundation upon as I lead Kipapa through my tenure. Peely, Pa'a, and Pono, correctedness, strength, and doing the right things. They provide guidance on how decisions are made as I navigate how to best build and support all of our students throughout the school year. I thought that was very nice. She also mentioned that they are preparing for the Kipapa Fun Fair on November fourth, November fourth, from four to eight PM, and the community's welcome to attend. Next, I received a nice report from the Middle School. And some of this may be, you may have heard at the last meeting, I'm not sure, and I can't remember that. Milli-lani Middle School is no longer a multi-track school, operates in a single track, and I think you're all aware of that. It has a new leadership team, though, because the principal, Chung, has retired, and the principal is Shannon Thomas Shiro. He is a tenured principal and a resident of Milli-lani. They have now three additional assistant principals because some of the other assistant principals have retired, and they are Corinne Hori Bata, Sherilyn Pang, and Stacy Tatayama. Jeff Horstman and Greg Nakasone complete the new administration team. Excuse me, got a frog in my throat. And I think this was a very nice thing. Milli-lani Middle School began the school year with a school community training event designed to solidify our vision of the school, making connections and ensuring that everyone feels they are part of our community. And I thought that was a really good thing. There's also gonna be a haunted house there, and it's sponsored by the Milli-lani High School PTSO. And that will be on October twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, Family Community Night Haunted House. And then last but not least, we have a report from Jay Kardashian at Milli-lani Uka. And he reports that September is Safety Month at Milli-lani Uka Elementary. That includes motor vehicle, bicycle, and pedestrian, and personal safety. And so that's good news. And he has a number of things that they're working on. They're gonna have a Fall Fest, and that will be on November ninth. And that's an opportunity for the community to come to the school and see what's going on. And they have new school clubs, and I thought this was interesting, too. Hawaiian Studies and Ina, a garden club. So thank you to all the principals who responded to my report, and that's it.
Wow, thank you so much for that thorough report, Marilyn. I see that Karumi has her hand up. Is that a question for Marilyn Karumi?
Yes, I do have one.
Oh, please, go ahead.
I would like to ask Chair Lee's assistance, and once again, speaking with Principal Murphy regarding the bright light that continues to be on at the stadium that actually goes into the homes up on the ridge, as well as maybe follow-up Superintendent Sayashi, who did say that he would check into opening the access between the Milli-lani High School parking lot and gymnasium that children don't have to walk all the way around the block when they're trying to get to school every morning at Milli-lani Waiana Elementary, so they can just quickly cross over through the high school before and after school.
Okay, thank you for mentioning those things, and I'll try my best.
Thank you. Members, are there any other questions for Marilyn on the Education Committee? All right, seeing none. We're gonna move on to announcements. We have a few announcements this evening. Friendly reminder that the Milli-lani Homecoming Parade is scheduled for this Saturday, September thirtieth, from nine AM to ten AM. So please be aware of certain routes on Mahalo Parkway and Kipapa Drive might not be accessible during that time since our students are going to be rallying for homecoming. Also, I'd like to remind everyone that our next board meeting is scheduled to be held Wednesday, October twenty-fifth, seven thirty at this location, Millani High School H Building. Finally, from my announcements, I'd like to remind that if you want to watch this meeting again, videotaping of this board meeting is scheduled to be shown on Olelo, channel focus, Eric, Focus Channel forty-nine every second Thursday at nine AM, and on Olelo Views fifty-four every first and third Saturday at nine AM. Are there any further announcements that have not been shared? Seeing none, I'd like to move that our board stands adjourned. Is there a second? Seconded by Member Ross. Any discussion? No? All those in favor, say aye. Any oppose? Say nay. All right, our meeting is adjourned at nine thirty-one this evening. Thank you so much, everyone. Aloha.